Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the order, the Sagitt City Council meeting for September 13th, 2021. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which all
Thank you. Clerk, please call a roll.
Here.
Becken.
Here.
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 Sir. All those in favor of the motion say yes? Regular council or regular scheduled meeting of August 23rd. Have a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Louis, seconded by Stanton to approve the minutes as presented. Any other questions, comments, corrections?
I've got a quick question on the on page four. Is it truly your contestant's name? Jeff Calvill?
What did you say this last name is?
Slayer, S.L.A.Y.E.R. You got that badly? Any other comments from council? If none, all those in favor of adopting the motion as presented, say yes? Yes, opposed, non-opposed? So carried? Okay, I hear me. No problem. For the audience benefit, we're kind of experimenting with a hybrid Zoom meeting, trying to not only do it in person, but also get it out there for our citizens. And it's kind of a work in progress, so bear with us. Appreciate it. The next order of business then is to approve accounts payable this evening. Have a motion, yes?
Move to a free accounts payable in the amount of $1,479,027.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to prove them accounts payable. Where's the amount for our tax pass through taxes? It really isn't itemized, is it? Of schools. Again, the always like to make the comment that, oh, there it is. Of the $1,479,000 we're approving this evening, $1,415,000 is for our pass-through taxes. This is a time of year where we collect taxes for the city and other taxing entities. And so we're not really spending or have that much money just to spend on our own. So always like to make that note for our viewers and public audience and the audience and attendance. So any questions on any of the bills? If not, can I have a motion on the or vote on a motion? All those in favor, I'm sorry. All those in favor of the motion as presented, say yes? Yes, opposed? Non-opposed, so carried? Okay, next order of business. Do we make a motion on the registers for information only? Yes, so unless there's some questions on the check register as presented, it's really a supporting documentation for some of the items that appear on accounts payables. If none, no questions, we'll continue moving on. No mayor comments this evening? City manager comments?
Mr. Mayor, the city manager's part is in the packet, page 12. We didn't have a chance to discuss the managers before the workshop, your last workshop. Happy to address any questions if you have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is just a little drawing for me.
All right, I did drive down Butler today, and there were a lot of lights being tested, so that's good, that's good. Any other questions? Okay, well, no further questions for the city manager. We'll move on. I am going to request approval of making an agenda change item 13E resolution appreciation for Deputy Krujda. We'll move that up to 10C. After we hear a report from Algen County Sheriff's Department, Brett Enstfield. So there's no problems with that. We'll move on. And we have no report this evening from Sagitt Township Fire District. Moving on, Algen County Sheriff's Department, Brett? Yes. Oh, yeah, I did. Check it off, too. Right there. Okay, let's back up. Not having a good idea. Okay, I'm sorry. This part of the meeting is the opportunity for the public to address city council on any agenda items appearing. Those who wish to address council, please step to the podium. State your name and community of residence and limit your time as to three minutes.
My name is Linda Esca, E.S.C.O.T.T. I reside at 863 Homeland. I'm here for two reasons. The first reason and I'm not talking about cyclists who cycle a lot. There's not a lot of sidewalks here in Sagitt. And sidewalks are not very wide, and you have children on bikes. You have women and men with strollers. You have visually impaired people like me, you have dogs. You have walkers, you have runners. And then you have bikers. And about a month ago, I got together with Karen and I came over to her office, and she told me.
Want me to come here?
I was at a place by a bike. Coming up behind me, no fire.
That is from me. And there's no, excuse me, there's no, hey, coming up on your right. Because they're not people who are cyclists. They're vacationers who are just out to rent a bike because it's something you do on vacation. So that's my one concern. There used to be a sign just north of my house that said, no bicycles on the sidewalk.
Of course, there were cyclists on the sidewalk, but there weren't a whole lot of them. In the last couple of years, it's disappeared.
It's immediately down or whatever. But especially during the season, it's really difficult. And it's not, I don't think it's any wider than a yardstick, the sidewalk.
With all the activity coming on, especially during the season, it's just a danger. Sometimes I think it's safer to walk down the street than it is on the sidewalk some days.
The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, in January of 2021, while we were out in our houses and restaurants, when I was running a hard time, the inner urban took it upon itself to help keep them going, but also to help the restaurants to operate, take out delivery service. You can call any restaurant in a tri community area and they'll do service. You could order your meal, pay for it, give the inner urban a 30-minute heads-up. And they would go to that restaurant, pick it up, deliver it to your door within 10, 15 minutes. I did a lot. The joke was, what's, where's Linda ordering tonight? Because I did it a lot. And I never had a cold meal. So they did it for the same amount of money, it would have cost. Get on the inner urban, go over there, pick it up. Take it home, $2, round trip. So they didn't charge extra money. It was just a service. And they were supposed to go until the end of March, and I think they finally ended it May 31st. So I, I think it would be really nice for the city of Sagittuck to somehow recognize them for
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Again, I kind of let Linda go because she was on a roll. But this stage, we're just asking to comment on agenda items only. There'll be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting to address council on any other topic that you wish.
On topic, my name is Seph Novicki. Actually, very close to Linda, 790 Simonson Drive. And my new, kind of new business, I was originally around in Wall Street. I did open up a snow boutique, totto boutique. And usually I'm trying to raise today, you is that actually something you mentioned on right now? Before, it's about the lighting and the lights for business. It's like the town spends a lot of effort to make the Butler Street really, really huge. And there is very little doubt.
You're down to more tourists, right?
Done it. And my business is on Wall Street. You know that after the Labor Day, the tourists are kind of out, gone. And but I'm still open. I still have to survive, I have business. So what I'm trying to get from your delay is to actually put some effort on Wall Street as well, as you do on the Butler. Because the Butler is on its own. People here, I hear a lot from, from my story saying that, hey, I live in other stores. It's on the streets, period. Just maybe, no. It's about other businesses as well. So we only have those two, we go streets to the town. I think we can afford to put nice on both of them. I think it's fair. We vote all about taxes. You may not pay the city, but we pay other taxes and we employ people and create business. I think it'd be nice for the city to actually approach all of us the same way. Not just the Butler Street. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Not the first time the city council has done that request has come up. So thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to adjust council this evening? Okay. If none, move on now to report from the Algen County Sheriff's Department. Brett?
I'll keep it. High school, the attempted investigation work and I'm doing new leads on the app. The detective bureau is working on that, on the lead on several investigative leads that are
Working. I've been at school this weekend with all the students.
If anybody has any questions?
I was just going to ask, I know they said that there were cameras in the parking lot of the high school. Did, is there, who did you say they're getting a lot of leads? Was that because somebody recognized the car or license plate was caught or?
There was another incident up at Home Christian High School that same morning. Prior to that, we were able to gain some footage, I think. Think you see some of the flyers and stuff. Some of the investigative leads off the description of that vehicle through other things, trying to attain a license plate and stuff. So this takes a little bit of time for all the stuff. Believe so. Same vehicle, same vehicle description, same physical description. Yeah, very, very close in proximity of time, so pretty much the time it took to drive down here, so. Yeah.
Can you follow up on communications that have occurred with the parents and students at the school? Have you all been in communication or have you worked?
We worked with it. I've been talking to Dr. Travis on the leads that we've had. And we're just letting the school communicate out with everybody so far, so, yeah. Just, I think it's better to have one front of one. You know, because most parents are going to go towards the school A's and so forth, so. And they do a great job. I told Dr. Travis, I had a, you know, I actually, the day of the incident that happened, I was off and I saw the thing come out, and I had full faith that they were handling it correctly, so.
I've heard great comments from parents about it.
Yeah, been talking to them quite a bit about it. Yep, updating them on anything and, you know, vice versa, so.
Do you have any other questions? Thanks, Brett. Appreciate it. At this point of the meeting, I asked Jay Club, maybe stand at the podium. This evening, basically, we'd like to recognize you for your heroic actions early Saturday, August 21st. Once again, that we're all, you know, agree with, that unfortunately didn't turn out the best, but it's not because of your efforts. And so the council would like to offer this resolution, and I'll read this. And so this is resolution number 210913-A. Resolution for appreciation to Deputy Jason Krujda. Whereas the city of Sagitt appreciates and honors the services provided by Algen County Sheriff's Department. Whereas Deputy Jason Krujda attempted underwater rescue under extremely challenging circumstances. Whereas the city wishes to express its gratitude for his heroic act. Therefore, be resolved by Sagitt. The council hereby adopts this resolution on appreciation to Jay Jason Krujda on behalf of all its citizens. After the 13th day of September 2021, a motion without this resolution will so. Okay, so we have a motion by Chester, seconded by Dean. This motion, over on the road, I'll vote for it.
Stanton?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Jason was one of the first staff to be able to, you know, came to work for us now over two years ago. We're free. You're not driving, you're having fun. But here are nothing but great things about you and what you do with our citizens and our business people. And we really appreciate your service and we're really, really proud and glad to have you on board. Okay? We'll have a little dance here. Dance here. Yeah, Aaron Orion said that he was going to personally make sure that this is the lullabies for you. But this is also something that we'd like for the Sheriff's Department to put in there in your personnel files, so. Thank you very much.
I speak loud. So anyways, we have no guest speakers. Unfinished business. We're having a little bit of trouble getting hold of a couple of members that we would like to discuss their reappointments to boards. We did get a reply from three individuals that I'd like to lump together in one motion to, for the council to approve the following three appointments. Tim Straker to the Historic Commission. Richard Bond to the ZVA. Larry Bloes to the Library. So can I have a motion regarding that, please? Okay, you got that badly?
Yes.
All right. Can I have a roll call, please?
Louis?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll work on the other two on this side. We're understanding that we're all interested in being a part of these just taking action to them. Now, we, they, no, go ahead.
Not to be the keeper agenda, but who missed the social district today?
Hey, not this.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess we're looking at two different, different things.
Okay.
This is the, oh, sharing the old one. That would help if I shared the new one, wouldn't it?
Okay. Try to keep me in line, you know? You're doing a pretty good job. But I think I got you on this one. All right, so we'll round out these appointments at our next meeting. There are no meetings coming up, by the way, that would cause any issues, so. That means as now moving on to new business agenda items. Social district activities. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is on page 20 in your packet? I think that's right.
Well, 17 is the cover page.
Discuss at your workshop on Wednesday. Mr. Mayor, do you want me to give a brief background for, for the audience or?
Uh, yes, if you would.
Sure. So what's being discussed with this agenda item is creating a social gathering space within the social district. So this is a space that people will be able to gather in and play various activities. And we set some parameters for the council to give their approval for letting staff kind of direct how these social gathering spaces will work. And so this is item number five on the cover page, which is page 18. There's four bullets, and I think that would just kind of highlight what the acting council will be considering tonight. And that would be for staff to work with the non-for-profit organizations to create these spaces and hopefully fund the activities that happen within. All the activities and amenities would be reviewed by the Department of Public Works. I mentioned the non-for-profit. Also that we as staff would come and report back to council that you all know how the activities are working. And then we've worked to the extent possible with local vendors to create some really high-quality games that take place in these, in these social spaces. So with that, Mr. Mayor, the recommended motions that you can get into discussion would be to allow staff to utilize Wix Park as a social space within the social district. The service gathering place with activities subject to the parameters that I just met, mentioned. And a crew expenses up to $1,000 by the city.
Okay, we have a motion by Louis, seconded by Peterson regarding the recommendation regarding the social district space at Wix Park. Yeah, you mentioned what you anticipate of this is saying this in the media or you're trying to get it down by whoever first, Christmas?
Oh, I'd, you know, I'd say it'd take us a few weeks. I don't know how quickly we get the games in place. So we're ready to take some action.
Does it conflict with the setup conflict with your?
I mean, it could be desired to act, but it's a cook-off doesn't take the whole park. Really takes the whole parking lot, excuse me, and then you got grass work up to the street. So you put them, put the game supposedly something that happened.
Or just not install those after the event?
Or I think we could collaborate and use the games to help the cook-off.
It'll be the Monday after, on the stage, I think it's down, go out to order.
Okay.
Next, any other questions or comments? Also. Okay, if none, all of you favor the motion say yes?
Yes.
The poll, none at all. We have to start the summer season with this concept. And we'll just monitor and see how those and how the public reacts. Moving on, the next agenda item is holiday lights. Actually, a little bit about that. But if you can, you can motion.
Yeah, there's exactly two. Yeah, no, there's two. But based on workshop consensus, my question that I had asked, is it okay if we activate the lights that we have installed earlier in the season? It seemed like council was pretty comfortable with that, but just to give me some power. If you could take action on that. With my page, page 23, it's a pretty simple, pretty simple description. And so I guess the recommended motion would be to activate the seasonal lights soon after installation.
So we'll just leave that up to the, yeah, the expression when they want to put the lights on. So we should have the motion. Yeah. But open here is seconded by Chester. Prove the recommendation for the city to activate the lights. All of the clear emotions say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Hold on, hold on.
Mr. Mayor, there's two, two agenda items related to holiday lights. No worries, just kind of now you're looking out for you. Um, which is the additional lights at the Wick's Park. If I may. So discussing the workshop was the idea of with, to go with the social gathering space to put lights at Wick's Park. Um, and as I mentioned at the previous meeting, I did get a cost for that. As Garnett pointed out, I was initially using the Easter lights. Garnett said, why don't we just use the tree wrap lights that we use in our other areas? In fact, that's what the vendor quoted. Um, and Scott Herbert went off and looked at the existing electrical outlets, add some of the trees, well, all of the trees in the, in the Wick's Park space. And so we got a cost to install two lights at all available outlets. And so that cost was close to five thousand dollars. Uh, the recommended motion from staff would be to approve the expenditure up to five thousand dollars for the additional seasonal lighting at Wick's Park.
Okay, any other questions regarding the no lights?
Uh, so, so five thousand dollars for the lights at Wick's Park. And I know, you know, we just had public comment about the lack of lights on Water Street. Is there any way to divvy that up a little bit and have some in Wick's Park and a few along Water Street? At least near some of the businesses on Water Street that are open in the off-season? I'd have z's on that. I know, I'm throwing around a lot of things, but it was. I was under the impression at some point we were going to try to get more lights on Water Street, but go ahead, John.
Well, unfortunately, I think this is a great start.
Yeah.
I think it would be great to see how someone responds with and then perhaps the lighting group and then it's the end of that. If that is a good pathway, it's going from not having any to having.
Well, at least light up the park.
Mr. Mayor, right, also we looked into that last year and, and you got the tree coverage down to the, our parking lot right before August. And then walls, as I said, I didn't have to feel the. Creep if you're trying to change the lights. That window office doesn't have much, so you have like one row or a row of them to have to go with. Uh, yeah, I think those will be law files you'd watch and you can do this.
Start with this. All right, thank you.
Yeah, what can I add, Mayor? Just how the, um, Wick's Park, the gazebo, the things and, uh, rest of the cons, how the gazebo. It allows us to notice that many light bulbs, the regular light bulbs are out of gazebo or there are a variety of incandescents, LEDs, or essence. Maybe just make a bit of that. You know, you can also, maybe that's a bad place for the.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you have someone just replace that one piece of wax? It looks like a broken tooth on the side facing the street, is that possible?
So lattice work, you're talking? So lattice work?
It's just, there's just one that's been down. I know we're going to be right up and I'm going to teach you this. Just right now.
Okay, missing tooth. Okay, thank you.
Not getting too much further into the situation, Wick's Park and gazebo, I do think this is something that's going to come up at a. If not the next, probably the next workshop. We've had some preliminary discussions with the city manager. He said there is kind of a plan.
Yeah, yeah. So I did get the email today regarding the condition of the gazebo. Uh, and I'll push out an email to council tomorrow and, and to the gentleman who made us aware of the concern. But they are, Department of Public Works currently is painting new lattice work for the bottom of the gazebo and they're getting ready to uh, paint the rest of it, just to get enough face left. Um, and so a little bit more, you can tell that you probably want to know, but the lattice is cedar and so it uploads paint. So they're on their like third go to the paint, uh, which they're working on inside the shop. So they've been working on this for a month or so. Um, so change is coming for the gazebo. Uh, and, and the way I will face.
Okay.
More red light slides.
Yeah. So. And then I think further discussion if not. Not to belabor the gazebo, but we have to have a little more in-depth construction, discussion about where we want to go regarding uh, a total project and that, over the, probably, this is kind of an interim, honestly, it's kind of a cosmetic. And, uh, for, for now, but it certainly is, is overdue. Keep in mind that we were, we wanted to do that this spring. We got caught up with the potential to be a finalist in the Lowe's grant for the Wick's Park, which was a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We thought we were in a good position to get that. We finished in the top ten, I think, right? But we didn't get the, the, the big prize and so it kind of set us back in. And we're, and we're well into the, sorry, that was in August, actually.
Yeah.
So that's where we got to. I have explained that with some of the citizens too. And I'm looking at that with some of the progress that we think we want to do and what we're going to have to look at going forward. So we'll have some discussions certainly about that in the future.
Yeah, I think the cosmetic repairs that they're about to make are going to make a big difference for the interim.
Okay, did we, do we, do we do that? We did vote, did we? So we have a motion regarding the additional five thousand for Wick's Park lights. All those that favor that motion say yes.
Yes.
Those not opposed, so carried. Now we'll move on to item, uh, new business item, the two different funding. Applications for grants, tap grant in the, uh, Mr. Ganesh will reinforce the trust fund, Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next three items under agenda are related to the non-motorized Blue Star Trail. Uh, the second item is related to being, being the lead applicant for the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is a federal grant. Um, and then also at the same time, uh, just approve that you're willing to apply for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. So the recommended motion from staff is to approve that the City of Sagittuck be the lead agency for the Transportation Alternative Program related to construction of non-motorized Blue Star Trail and to also apply for the Michigan Natural Resources Trail Fund.
Approve how the city of Sagittuck, the Michigan Natural Resources Program, to have, live construction of the non-motorized Blue Star Trail. It also applies for the Michigan Natural Resources Trail Fund.
But motion by Dean, seconded by Stan, approve the recommended motion regarding the staff, and then our, the, the grants outside of the agency. Uh, any other questions or discussions? We did, we did have some in-depth discussions at our workshop regarding this. There weren't any particular concerns, uh. Was by the council, so any other comment?
I would just say that this is the recommendation, the direction to the dashboard. Uh, for the Blue Star Trail, just to have that.
Any other questions? Isn't that, uh, kind of a roll call? Will actually require. Let's, let's.
Okay. Okay. Dean?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
A related issue we call less to be a, uh, magic contribution. That's being requested for capital cost and you. Run a little bit of that.
Yes, sir. Um, so with the, with the grants, one of the things that the reviewers of the grants will look at is the municipality that's in the game. Um, and what you are contributing to, to the capital cost for the project. And so the committee has discussed this, um, as far as what each municipality is willing to put in. Uh, the township of Sagittuck decided to put ten thousand in, um, actually framed their motion up to ten thousand depending on what the city of Sagittuck puts in, help pressure. Uh, and then I'm not sure where, uh, where Douglas is at, at, at the moment. Uh, so as you can see in the packet, we left this other mount plank, but I do believe the committee was hovering on, we did not exactly make a motion for ten thousand, uh, English near around.
Yeah, I think it really wasn't an interior, in Sagittuck, any amount, but I think it favored the, the preference of thousands as well. And I, I moved to approve the contribution of ten thousand dollars. Uh, but I'm more raised with South Trail in the streets.
Okay, motion by Truster, seconded by Lewis to approve ten thousand dollars. Uh, any further comments or questions, council? Okay, a roll call, please.
Truster?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Okay, uh, next item also related to the Blue Star Trail in the city of Sagittuck and near the community. You know, we started making this agreement. We have, we have, we have been discussing this in quite detail. At the workshop, council, we had a lot of questions, but it's like a clarification to the manager. So, Ryan, can you, uh, explain this to our? Have you seen this, please?
Yeah, happy to do so, Mr. Mayor. Also related to the grant, as you mentioned. Uh, should you be so fortunate to get the grant awards and build a trail? Uh, the people that give you the money want to make sure that you're going to maintain, uh, the trail system that they just gave you some money for. And so you have to have some understanding of how you're going to maintain the, the trail system. And so, uh, the committee reviewed numerous options on, on the way to do that. And what they're recommending is to join an existing maintenance agreement that exists between Lake Town Township, the city of Village of Douglas and Sagittuck Township. So the city would just join in and share those similar maintenance responsibilities, which, uh, at the end of the day, um, each municipality is responsible for maintaining the infrastructure within their jurisdiction. Uh, wherever there's opportunities for economies of scale, like going out for bidding or proposals, uh, those opportunities should be taken. Um, so that's the, the agreement. And so the recommended motion would be to agree to join the existing memorandum of, memorandum of understanding regarding the Blue Star Trail maintenance with Lake Town Township, City of Village of Douglas and Sagittuck Township.
So.
Okay, motion by Stan, seconded by Peterson to, uh, approve our decision. This is, this is, we're agreeing. Any further comments from council? Jeff, can you add any, any other discussions that might have?
No, I didn't, I didn't have anything to add. I think it's been a concept of, of, I think it's over, I've heard it's part of community. Uh, cooperatives, uh, each, and each unit should be primarily responsible for maintaining its own trail. Um, I think there's been some discussion about how much responsibility we have to have to the township's department and so on. But I believe the, the, uh, uh, operating opinion is that we've got primary council of Sagittuck Trail and we don't, we can't, we can't be required to maintain a, 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 Brian, crack anything.
No, you're correct.
Additional clarification, so I have your, council, come on in? Isn't that, council, roll call, please?
Yes. Stanton?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Motion for again, I'm just. Uh, next. Item, final item, new business agenda, the seeking the audio control.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, discuss at your workshop and in your agenda package is your recommendations on upgrading our AV systems, so that we don't have to stare into our laptops uh, at our tables here. And so thanks to the help of Kate White, uh, she collected, uh, four proposals. We got the last proposal this morning. Um, and what we're proposing to do is have, um, a camera system so that we can all be recorded and then have a hybrid system where we can hear people talk. This would be for both presentations and a hybrid Zoom meeting situation. Uh, and the last proposal that we received today was from Geist. Uh, which was option number four. And they came in, uh, four thousand dollars lower. Just got that this morning, so it hasn't been pushed out. We came in four thousand dollars lower. As far as staff can tell, very apples to apples comparison. We've done their references, they've done work in Ottawa County. In fact, we're the same company that installed these original microphones back, who knows when. So. We do have experience with that. We've talked to other people that have utilized their resources. Um, and so with that, I mean, there's a lot of technical details in these proposals. None of which I'm willing or able to explain, explain. Um, but I can say that we've bettered this process and at least been involved. Um, and I, I think we're pretty comfortable with making a recommendation, use Geist. I don't know the exact dollar amount. Uh, so what I would ask, because it's budgeted, is to just authorize staff to be able to enter into an agreement which could be executed by the mayor, um, in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars.
Mayor?
Yes, I moved to authorize staff to enter a agreement with vendors to install AV equipment that city hall, amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand.
I would say any vendor or specifically mentioned by. Well, what does that mean now?
That was the intent. That was the intent, yeah. So it's okay to mention that, that's Washington, I meant. Okay.
All in, all of, misstatement, or? And give that, we'll get a better name again.
Geist.
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 Well, here I move to authorize staff to enter an agreement with Geist to install AV equipment that city hall, not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion from council?
I just, I think this is really important, uh, for the transparency. I'm not sure this is very frustrating. We're not really supposed to, to post their current guidelines in meetings. So, you know, not being able to hear or the audio, the video not being of good quality. So I think it's, it's very important, but we would, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Follow up on that. I think it's really important that people be able to come in on our workshops too. Because like tonight, we don't have a lot of discussions to move you through this agenda. But if they're able to get in, uh, Zoom for a workshop and they see the, you know, find this, like, this, I think that's very important. A lot, we have a lot of, turn out, it's, it's a lot of, what is it?
Okay. And also add that this has been on the council's wish list for several years. Money has been appropriated, some.
Research was actually initiated by the prior city manager.
Prior city manager, staff assistants and. So a little bit of catch-up and maybe that was good because a lot of technology, technology, a lot of technical advances, I think, in this area. Because of that, so. Yeah. Yours truly.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on this item, the clerk, please call a roll on motion.
Dean?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster? Becken?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. This portion of, uh, meeting, if we, uh, if we want to address council on any agenda, or any items they wish to address or want council to be, uh, informed of, you step to the podium. Identify yourself and your community of residents and limit your comments to three minutes.
And I live in Glen.
I'm Carl Carmichael, and I live in England, and friends of the Blue Star. Thank you, and serious thank you for your support on the elections this evening. For, I certainly hope to embarrass this. It's been a lot of effort on everyone's part, although he's not here tonight, but I would thank her as well.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council this evening? Okay, if none, council receives several communications that, we get these communications from time to time. If it's something that council feels necessary to bring up, usually is either at the meeting or it's something that ends up in a workshop agenda item. So, do we have to approve the Knights of Columbus? I thought we had to approve that, the Tootsie Rolls sale on the city streets.
Let's go for it.
Okay. Kind of such a, what's that?
That's what this time agenda.
Well, let's just like, make an administrative decision on, yeah, yeah. Hoppies and Tootsie Rolls on the city street, different times of the year. The Tootsie Rolls actually from the Knights of Columbus for charitable, raise it for charitable events. It's been going on since, long I can remember this now.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, all right, let's cover it for now.
Okay, any other communications by council?
Yes, okay. We have, any boards and commission, any courts this evening?
I want to mention that, and they approved the goal to tell Sagatuck on Lake Street to change the archera graphic to constant center, that can only be used by guests. And then our next meeting on Thursday night will be regarding, I said that, because it's about community residential.
Hey, thank you. Regarding the planning commission, I'd like to remind the public that we do have an existing vacancy open on the planning commission. I don't know if we've gotten any inquiries yet. Several of us have been getting the word about, so if there's someone that you know or someone out there that may be interested in at least investigating the position, I'm sure that city house, city staff, especially Cindy Osborne, her zoning administrator, be glad to chat with whoever, so you can always refer those people to Cindy also. No other boards or committees?
And a couple, so. One, which Ryan referred to in his report, Horizon and Small Cell Tower, a suitable location somewhat in this area, originally was on the light post out here, but we've recommended that move it across the way where the parking lot is there, or the city corner. So that's, that's our recommendation. And then also approval of experiment across the way, Butler Street Patio, Butler Patio, to make that a two-story outdoor area, well, similar to probably what the large looks like, with that as well. Those are, the cosmetic house, considering the house down on Holland Street, around the corner of Lucy and Hall, some nice upgrades they've been making. The recycling committee, Matt, we had a presentation from Karen O'Brien, who's the executive director of Michigan Recycling Coalition, a really nice presentation to the group on Part 18, which is legislation that's coming through, maybe through the House and now it's in the Senate, towards the upgrading of everyone's favorite subject, solid waste. It's really actually quite interesting stuff, but it's in the committee, I know, I know, I know. But it was very interesting, as well, there's just some really nice upgrades that are coming. Alaven County will be required to update its solid waste plan once that passes the Senate. And that will actually flow into us, we might intend it, with recycling, sustainability, and a lot of the items the recycling committee is taking on, also hazardous waste, all that. So those hearings in the Senate will start in October. That's the gist of it. There's not really a good stuff coming from the recycling committee, but most of it we have. Multiple of our first bucket downstairs here in the city, and the second is on the side, so it's already piled down there. So we're anxiously waiting the next battery bucket. And then after that, we'll be on our own, fund our subscription. The township has gone there, so it's now on the road, and Douglas has gone off. So folks are all, moving forward, and hoping that we do do that. The rest still works.
Okay, thank you, Governor.
Scott, what's up? Did we get some?
Thanks for my, yes, the non-motorized work group is making progress on securing and kind of fixing up the radar station that we've got, a new fund that was in the budget that we, the council failed to repair. We believe that's gonna stop one of them entering and causing further damage to the radar station. We hope to have the fence repairs continued shortly. Not all done, I think as we all know, it can be a challenge in the superior. The fencing teams have a bit of difficulty locating the necessary equipment to scale on all that. I think that Scott and you, Ryan, they have heard from Russ Scott Carter regarding that in the last year or so. But I mean, our team continues to scrape away diligently at the paint, and you're still hoping to, along with a lot of very kind out here, you're still hoping to stay attracted in paint this weekend, stage.
A dedicated bunch, it's not easy either. Well, any others? Committee reports? If none?
I'm gonna look at the progress, but actually this is, try to give you the non-motorized trail, and you passed certain important pieces of our recommendation. We are gonna be bringing the actual trail handle to council for approval at our next regular meeting, right?
The assignment will come out in the work.
Yeah. Right, I'm glad you brought that up, because it's something I wanted to make sure that we shared this evening, that, you know, get into the real nuts and bolts at the workshop and see what, what is being presented to us by the advisory group, and look forward to that. Anything else to add from boards and commissions, council comments, as we go around? Anything to add, Scott?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the lawyer, and to congratulate them on a very, very successful challenge by this weekend. And I think they did a really good job with that. And I think they really marked September 11th anniversary, September 11th, very appropriate on the way. And I have to express my thanks to all of the researchers and volunteers that were there for the event. Indeed, it was really nice to be walking up those, that's actually the number six, with two of the paramedics most, most caring, and it was really, really nice. I really appreciate that. It's a big thing, and you did a really great job of the events.
Okay, good. Kim? Okay, Lauren? Chris?
I'd like apologies to Ryan and Scott, I think that he's been covered, covered by all their calls.
Oh, don't worry about it. Thank you for asking, though. And along with Ryan and Scott, leaving that.
Without use, without need of it. That's good, all right. And, oh, is this your last meeting? Okay, so I thought I'd bring that up and recognize for those who don't know that our city clerk is leaving us and wanting to continue her pursuit of the mask. And we're currently actively searching for a new city clerk, so, council, this is like, thank you for the work you've done, and best of luck in the future. All right. Any other comment? A motion to adjourn the meeting? All of the papers, yes? All of them? Good night, everybody, thank you.